Okay, everybody, we're ready to start the meeting.
Good evening, Pomona. My name is Nora Garcia and I'm the Vice Mayor for the City of Pomona, representing District 3. I'm here this evening with a coalition of people to share information regarding housing rights for tenants and landlords. At this difficult time, it is important for all of us to remember that there are no enemies. We are not in this alone. We are in this together. None of this is anyone's fault. COVID-19 happened, and now we are all dealing with this consequences together. We all may be different. We always have been, and we always will be, but that difference should not be detrimental. It should be an asset. So today, we are sharing with you both tenants and landlords resources that will help you coexist and continue working together to ensure that the City of Pomona does not have the expected tsunami of evictions or lost property because of the COVID-19 situation. And here to moderate us is Yesenia Miranda Mesa, President of Pomona United for Stabilized Housing. She will be introducing Jamara from Neighborhood Legal Services, as well as Elena from Eden, and Kathy Tessier, a property owner, both commercial and residential here in the City of Pomona. Yesenia, thank you for being here and for being our moderator.
Thank you, Councilmember Nora. Good evening, Pomona residents. Like Councilmember Nora said, my name is Yesenia Miranda Mesa. I am the President of Pomona United for Stable Housing. And as Councilwoman Nora Garcia mentioned, this is a subject that is affecting our entire community, but we understand that we are all hurting during these uncertain times. And the Pomona COVID Response Basic Needs Committee wants to bring relief to both our tenants and our landlords during this town hall meeting. We are very grateful that you have taken the time to join us on this very important subject in order for you all to be informed. Therefore, we have a tenant landlord panel lineup. First to speak will be Jumana Bamba, Staff Attorney from Neighborhood Legal Services, LA. Second to speak, Elena Pop, Executive Director for Eden Eviction Defense Network. Also Kathy Tessier, Pomona landlord, from the Artco Management. And last, Danielle Holy, from the City of Pomona Neighborhood Service Department Housing Division. We will then take any questions that our residents may have in regards to our town hall. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Jumana Bamba. Go ahead and take it away.
Hi, everyone. I am a staff attorney at Neighborhood Legal Services. I'm going to share my screen now. It looks like I'm not able to share it.
A minute, let me find out where that is.
Sounds good.
Nope, nope, nope. I believe you can do it now.
Great. Yes, I see it. All right, so I'm going to review some of the COVID-19 tenant protections that are in place. First, just a brief overview of Neighborhood Legal Services. So Neighborhood Legal Services offers free legal services to moderate and low-income individuals in LA County. We have a few areas in which we work in, including housing, domestic violence, public benefits, and healthcare. And I work specifically on the PEP team, which is Lawyers Preventing and Ending Homelessness Project. And we partner with CES agencies to provide legal services to remove barriers to housing. And the services that PEP provides really quick are public benefits, health issues, unpaid traffic tickets, expungements, housing, domestic violence, immigration, and unemployment insurance. And essentially, we work on issues that create a barrier to housing and can be resolved within six months to a year. And if you know you're unsure whether you fit this criteria, just reach out and ask. So I'm gonna cover two areas of authority that address tenant protections. The first is what the courts are doing. So the courts are not processing eviction complaints for at least 90 days after the emergency declaration is lifted by the governor or the Judicial Council changes the order. As of now, there is no end date to the emergency declaration. So at whatever point it ends, plus 90 days, that's when eviction complaints will start to be processed. And what this means is that landlords can still file evictions, but courts will not issue a summons, which is what starts an eviction case. So tenants don't have to answer the eviction or take any other action. There's one exception to the rule here. There's a public health and safety exception. And the court will not default any tenant if they don't answer a complaint in time, except in the case of that public health and safety exception. And we haven't seen that played out very often, but theoretically, it could involve tenants maybe threatening violence or using a weapon or something like that. The second kind of area of tenant protection comes from the LA County Eviction Moratorium. And the City of Pomona is covered by this moratorium, which protects both regular tenants and mobile homeowners. So what the moratorium does is it bans evictions for failure to pay rent because of COVID-19. And tenants will have 12 months to pay back owed rent after September 30th, 2020, which is the current moratorium end date. The moratorium also bans no-fault evictions, except if that public health or safety exception comes into play. And these no-fault evictions include unauthorized occupants, pets, or nuisance, as necessitated by COVID. So if, for example, a tenant has to take care of a parent, and that parent is an unauthorized occupant in the unit, that can't be the basis for an eviction. The moratorium protection applies retroactively from March 4th, 2020, until September 30th, 2020, which is set as the current eviction moratorium end date. And what tenants have to do to take advantage of these protections is to provide written notice to the landlord of their inability to pay rent related to COVID-19. And they have to do this no later than seven days after rent is due. There's no obligation to provide the landlord with supporting documents, but the tenant should hang on to those documents just in case it goes to court. And rent increases for rent stabilized rental units are also prohibited during the moratorium period. And that's kind of a brief overview. If you have any questions or if you would like to reach out, then this is our contact information.
Thank you so much, Jumana. We really appreciate it. So now, we're gonna go over to Elena Pop, Executive Director from Eden Eviction Defense Network. And she will be talking about what will happen if Rule 1 is lifted, and what are the services Eden is going to provide to Pomona tenants. So Elena, go ahead and take it away.
You're on mute.
There we go. Sorry about that. Hi, am I on? Yeah, okay. So my name is Elena Pop, and I'm the Executive Director of a small nonprofit called the Eviction Defense Network. We counsel tenants all over the county, and we provided, prior to COVID, representation to tenants whose cases fed into the downtown court. We've developed a relationship over the course of the last several years with Yesenia from Bush, and with activists from the Pasadena Tenants Union and the Glendale Tenants Union. And I've come to realize just how underserved the communities that feed into the West Covina and Pasadena Courts are. And Pomona feeds into the West Covina Court. And I'm sure you all know that Yesenia is a very persuasive young woman, and she has had me taking cases I did not have time to take, because she brings people to the clinics. And when I say no, she just does not take no for an answer. So the COVID crisis gave us the opportunity to expand. And I'd like to share my screen to show you where that expansion is happening. We are part of something called the Right to Counsel Coalition. And the Right to Counsel Coalition is going to be expanding into these courts. So, and I can never figure out what to do with the people. So the Pasadena West Covina is gonna be considered an eviction-free zone. And these organizations are making a commitment to work in this eviction-free zone, including mine. And then, we've divided the county. Each of these boxes represents a eviction hub court. So this is one zone. This is one zone. This might turn into one zone. Right now, it's two. This is one. This is one. The eviction-free zone that we have taken over, that we have decided to take lead on, we're gonna be the lead agency, includes all of these cities and these supervisory districts. And these are the SPA districts. And so we're here. And we overlap in SPA 2 and SPA 3. These are the tenant unions that are working with us. And these are the numbers of cases filed in this area. So last year, 40,572 evictions were filed. 16% of them were filed in the Pasadena and West Covina Court, in the two courts that we're planning to represent. So this is an opportunity to shift things, because there have never been resources in these two courts. And for the first time, we're gonna be able to tell any tenant in Pomona, if your income is 80, is, right now, our grant is, we have two grants. One is for people at 80% of median and below, and the other one is for people at 50% of median and below. And anyone above 80% of median will be able to pay based on ability to pay a below-market rate, so that no one will be turned away, I guess, until we run out of lawyers. The biggest concern about this is that we have a problem with, we have a problem with not having sufficient lawyers to fill the positions for the funds that we think we are going to be able to get from county, from foundations, and will also be reaching out to local jurisdictions to ask that you help with making sure there's enough money to represent your constituents. The biggest, you know, Jumana talked about Rule 1. Rule 1 has literally stopped an eviction tsunami. We should have had 365,000 evictions in April. Right now, 491,000 families are at risk of eviction. The average number of eviction filings last year at this time was 3,300 average for the three months, four months at issue. We averaged 350 evictions due to Rule 1. We need for local elected officials to please send a message to the Judicial Council, the governor, and the state legislature to please save Rule 1 until we can get an infrastructure in place to be able to represent tenants. 99% of tenants that go to court alone lose their cases. Tenants must have representation. We also ask that you support AB 1436. It doesn't forgive rent, so it's a good compromise. Well, actually, I want to forgive rent, but it is a compromise. It doesn't forgive rent. But it takes the battle out of eviction court and puts it into regular civil court. So the tenant will have a debt, a debt that can be collected, but won't lose their housing. People cannot shelter in place if they have no place in which to shelter. And every tenant that is put out on the street is at risk of contagion, and is at risk of then making someone else sick. And I'll stop there.
Thank you so much, Elena, for chiming in. Now, we're gonna turn it over to Kathy Tessier. She's a Pomona landlord for our tech co-management. And she will be talking about how many needing companies are not providing mortgage relief. Landlords that are trying to meet other property financial obligations, such as emergency repairs, basic maintenance needs, utility insurance, taxes, et cetera, and communication for them is very important on behalf of both parties. And both parties need to be receptive to compromise. So take it away, Ms. Tessier.
I apologize for not having lovely posters and a list of things to talk about, because I am last minute. But I'd like to relay that the concerns that tenants have, that tenants have, is really truly understood by most responsible landlords. And that the objective of landlords is trying to maintain housing as much as possible, whenever possible. And that requires a lot of intense communications with tenants. Trying to find documents that they can understand about what their obligations are and what the landlords can and cannot do is really, really important. And those items, as I'm sure your Senate can tell you, are hard to come by. And once you do come by them, how do we get them into the hands of tenants, so that they know what they can and cannot do? And one of the primary concerns that has been probably since day one of this pandemic has been the misinformation about the fact that tenants don't have to pay rent at all, ever. And that they're to the end. And I think everybody knows that the rumors are there, that tenants don't have to pay rent. And we've been able, fortunately, in most of our residential properties, to really work with the tenants. And they do realize how serious it is to try to maintain their housing as much as possible. And that is all through really intense communication. What we do find, unfortunately, with, I don't really want to put blankets on descriptions, but trying to communicate with larger corporations or larger ownerships that do not have vested interests in the community, let's take Pomona. They own a lot of units. They have, in many cases, financial resources that they can sit back and don't need to be concerned about the tenant's stability. And as a result, those tenants suffer in the long run. The owners that have perhaps smaller numbers of units, who live in the community or close in some way to the community, really do care about their tenants and don't want vacancies. And anything that they can do to communicate that to the tenants is really, really important. The fear, I think, from a landlord's perspective, is that the lending companies, banks, credit union, wherever the loan rests with, they are not cooperating at all. There are a few that have given like 90-day delays, or put that money on the end of the loan, or doubled the mortgage after the 90th day, or whatever the case may be. But it's not enough, because we're already past that 90 days. And as a result, many of the lending companies are saying, so what? Lose it. We'll take the property back. And that is very scary to us as landlords, not only the fact that we, like everybody else, that's our job. That's how we support our families as well. And the fear is that, in the end result, there is going to be a lot of turnover in rental housing. And I do not think that's going to benefit our tenants. And that scares me. And we need to look at pressure on either getting funding for tenants, so they can pay their rent, or at least portions of it. And secondly, to be able to put some political pressure on the mortgage companies to respond the way everybody else is having to respond, which is tighten your belts and forego those payments for the six months or 12 months, or whatever it takes to solve that issue. So two main points. Communication between the tenants and owners is very important. And if it happens to be a manager on the site, that's fine, too. But communicate. If it happens to be a large corporation that might be sitting in LA somewhere, get those letters out there, get those phone calls out there, and communicate. And secondly, let's, as a community, put pressure on lending institutions, whether that means pressure on the government, federal, state level, whatever, to cooperate in this effort as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathy. We really appreciate your input. And right now, I just want to open up the opportunity, if Elena or Jumana want to add anything else, before we move to Danielle. Is there anything you guys would like to add? You're on mute, Elena.
I think it's very important to be conscious of the fact that there is a lot of tension between landlords and tenants. I've been doing this for 35 years, and I have never seen so much tension between landlords and tenants. And we need to do things to reduce that tension. And the way that you reduce that tension is by increasing communication. So we have a Tenant Survival Guide. The Tenant Survival Guide is very, I mean, it is a zealous advocacy tool for tenants. But we tell tenants, please communicate with your landlords. Though I have to send a letter, well, that depends on your local emergency tenant protection measure. Should I send a letter? Absolutely. Why? Because it's the polite thing to do, because it will reduce tension with your landlord. If your landlord knows what's happening, communication is very important. We are dealing with a lot of illegal lockouts, and uptick in illegal lockouts like I have never seen. We are dealing with illegal utility terminations. And when I talk to the landlords, I can hear the stress in their voice as well, because there is a problem when money is not coming in. We need to get our government to do more for landlords. I know that the federal government did good for landlords, because I have a federally insured loan. I am currently unemployed. I'm working a lot, but not getting paid. I'm working about 17 hours a day and not getting paid, because my agency doesn't have any funds coming in at the moment. But I was able to get a forbearance, and those COVID months, because I'm a good mortgage payer, will be tacked on to the end of my loan. 30% of our landlords have access to that. We need to let them know about that. And the state needs to be encouraged to do similar kinds of loan forbearance programs, which will then greatly reduce the tension. AB 1436 has a mortgage relief provision, and is another reason that you should support it. Send letters of support to the senators and Assembly members that represent your districts. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elena. So now, I'm gonna turn it over to Danielle Holy. And she has some good news for tenants and landlords. So here we are, you know, as a COVID response team, we are trying, you know, with the city, the hardest that we possibly can to eliminate stress on both ends, you know, because we do know that landlords are as stressed as tenants. So Danielle, can you please take it away?
Thank you so much, Yesenia. So my name is Danielle Holly, and I'm with the City of Pomona. And I wanted to let you know this evening that we have been working extremely hard with the County of Los Angeles, state level, fed level, to secure as much funding as possible to provide rental assistance to our tenants, and consequently, to our landlords here in Pomona. We are looking to work with partners, nonprofit service partners, in our community that will help us to get the funding out to residents here as quickly as possible. And we're looking to start working on releasing some of this funding and working with our partner agencies as early as September. We will keep you posted. We're asking that if you need rental assistance, to please be on the lookout, please visit the city's website. And we will share as much information on our website, Facebook, social media sites, and our partner agencies as well, on the call and partner agencies across the city, getting the word out about the rental assistance. So we know that we have landlords and tenants that are really in need right now. And we're doing everything we can to get these dollars out to you. So we just ask that you hold on just a little bit longer, and know that we are working as quickly as possible to provide that help and assistance to you.
Thank you so much, Danielle. So yes, that is great news on behalf of the city. Like I said, we are working very hard to try to bring these funds into our tenants' hands in order to pay the landlords, in order for there to be some type of relief. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for questions. If whoever's watching would want to ask a question, you guys can go ahead and add it on to the YouTube link. And we could go ahead and start answering the questions. So one of the questions that came in was, when and where would landlords be able to evict tenants? That was one of our questions. Did Jumana or Elena want to take that question? Elena, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Thank you. Well, first, I would hope that landlords wouldn't resort to evicting tenants at this time. But if you're asking, if my tenant hasn't paid the rent, when will I be able to evict? If that is the question that you're asking, then here is the answer. Under Rule 1 that Jumana talked about, right now, you can file an eviction action. It's just not gonna go anywhere. You'll file it, and no summons will be issued. And because no summons is issued, nothing else can happen with that case. That rule was initially in place until 90 days after the governor raises the state of emergency. However, the Judicial Council, which is the administrative body of the courts, has now said that they are inclined to eliminate that rule on August 14. There has been a very big campaign to stop that from happening. And we are hoping that they will wait to take a decision until at least the legislature has a chance to pass some sort of relief. Right now, Right now, because I believe Pomona is currently covered by the county ordinance, although if you pass a stronger law, you'll be covered by that stronger law. Under the county ordinance, there's a twelve-month repayment period. So a landlord should not file an eviction action until those twelve months pass. Because if a landlord does file an eviction action before the twelve months pass, then they're going to find themselves in court against a member of my team. And if you find yourself in court, where I'm a very nice person, but not when I'm being a lawyer. And so what will happen is you won't be able to collect rent while that eviction is going. So now your tenant can't start paying you the prospective rent, but you can't collect it. So what have you accomplished? The tenant is still in possession, the tenant, you cannot collect the rent from a tenant that now has the, the money to pay because they've now gotten a job because you didn't wait the twelve-month period of repayment. So we are encouraging landlords not to fall prey to the landlord attorneys who are hungry. Okay, they're not making money. They've laid off all their staff. They're trying to convince landlords to file lawsuits that are not going to go anywhere because of the twelve-month repayment periods. And the county twelve-month repayment period is something that should be honored. And, and we can all get through this together, I think, if we figure out ways to get protection for both landlords and tenants.
Thank you, Elena. Is there anything you would like to add, Jumana or Danielle or Kathy?
No, I think Elena summarized it very well.
Okay, perfect. We have another, Kathy? No? Okay, we have another question. And how much is the percentage a landlord can raise the rent, especially right now with the COVID? Does anybody want to take a shot at it? Go ahead, Kathy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, frankly speaking, we're not raising rents. And I think any landlord who has a remote sense of responsibility during this time is going to avoid that. And I don't think people realize how costly that is for, for a landlord because many of our expenses and our, our, what they call a pro forma for a property, you have to turn in to get a loan. You have to show all the property is going to perform and what it's going to do. So now that's out the window. But most of the lenders' loans have requirements. You have to adhere to your pro forma. And if you don't, it's cause for foreclosure. So because of that, the, the property owner is saying, okay, I, I'm not going to raise rent. There's no, there's, there's not a conceivable way of raising rents in my view. But that's a personal view. But the, but the problem is now that offsets a number of different things that are, should be occurring in the future and aren't going to. And one of those is capital expenses. You might have, you know, landscaping improvements planned. You might be replacing kitchens, whatever it is, and that won't happen without certain amounts of rent raises over a period of time. So that's biting the bullet from the landlord's standpoint just as much as the tenants are feeling it as well, obviously.
Thank you, Kathy. Jumana, go ahead.
Sure. So just generally, for those properties that are covered by a rent stabilization ordinance, I believe there can't be a rent increase. The governor's order for properties more generally, the governor's order limits the rent increase to ten percent, I believe. But it, it really depends on what property, where you're staying. So if, if the questioner has more specific questions about what law covers their property, they should reach out.
Thank you, Jumana. Elena, did you want to add that it's five percent plus for the time being? You're on mute.
The very first thing a lawyer needs to do before answering a question is, where do you live and a specific address? Because the law that protects a tenant will depend on the specific address. But because we're talking Pomona, we can kind of give a little bit of an answer. So Pomona residents don't have rent control law or rent stabilization law. So if there's any protection at all, it's under the Tenant Protection Act, also known as AB fourteen eighty-two. The law was passed in September of last year, went into effect January first. And what it says is every unit is covered unless it is covered by a, a local law. So that doesn't apply. Or it has to be older than fifteen years old, older than fifteen years old, and that's a rolling date. And the law exempts single-family homes and condos unless they are owned by a corporate entity or an LLC with a corporate partner. It also exempts duplexes if the owner lives in one of the two units. And all rent controls exempt things like student housing, boarding care facilities, hotels, unless someone stays more than thirty days, and, and hospital beds, et cetera, right? So if the tenant lives in a unit that is more than fifteen years old and is not a single-family home, not a duplex with an owner living on the other side, then the allowable rent increase is five percent plus the Consumer Price Index. Right now, the Consumer Price Index is, and we're in a little bit of a debate because there's two Consumer Price Indices, it turns out, but we think it's one point two five. So that's what's allowed right now. If the unit is not covered by the Tenant Protection Act, then under the anti-gouging law that Jumana is referring to, the cap is ten percent. And also the cap under the TPA is also ten percent. If the Consumer Price Index were to go up to, say, six percent, the cap would be ten percent there as well.
Thank you, Elena. We have another question. And it is, what are your rights if you are renting a room from someone?
Do you want me to take that, Jumana? Yeah, so this one is a tough one. So if you are the sole boarder in a, in a house and the owner of the house lives there, you are called a lodger and you have almost no rights. This is not true in LA. But it is true in, sorry. I got this series of media calls and we're educating people through the press. So I've, I've been trying to answer their questions when I'm on break from now, but they say they're done with me. So, so lodgers have almost no rights. Questionable that they even have a right to the eviction process. Although if I were a homeowner, I would not put out a lodger. I would go through the eviction process because there's too much risk of not going through the eviction process. If you have more than one lodger, you now have a boarding house. And in LA, boarders and boarding houses that stay more than thirty days are protected by the rent control law. I'm not sure what the TPA says about that. So I would have to get back to that tenant to research whether a boarder in a boarding house is protected by the Tenant Protection Act. Under COVID though, you have, you can't be kicked out. I think that all of the county COVID protect, nobody can get kicked out, including people in a, in a boarding house.
Okay, thank you, Elena, for that. Now we have a comment. It's a general comment and they said, they should require proof that they are unable to pay rent due to COVID nineteen. Many people tend to abuse the system. So that was just a comment that was said in general. Does anybody want to respond to that or should we move forward?
There are good tenants, there are bad tenants, there are good landlords, there are bad landlords, such as life. We should all be good people. And I'm getting darker and darker as, as the, as the evening proceeds. I think the sun must be going down and my light's not helping me.
So our next question is, I have a couple of questions about being a tenant and landlord keeps raising the rent and won't fix nothing around the house. Another question, we have a new landlord and he wants to raise the rent eighteen point two percent, but has not given us a written sixty-day notice. Do I advise him to do this?
Jumana, you want to? I have a tendency to take over, so I, I want you. Should I go?
I think Kathy, Kathy wants to, to chime in.
Yeah, obviously, or whoever that person is, obviously needs to get some advice because it sounds like he's, they're taking advantage of him. Yes, I suppose there are incidences where you could raise eighteen percent, but they're rare. And it would take a lot of documentation and proof of why that had to be done and what was being done regarding that. There are definitely limits on what can be done. And it doesn't, he doesn't say what kind of residency is either. I don't know if it's an apartment or a house or a room or whatever.
So let's assume it's not protected by the TPA. If not protected by the TPA, the most the landlord can raise the rent is ten percent because of the emergency anti-gouging law. If it is protected by the TPA, meaning it's less than fifteen years old, no, more than fifteen years old, not a single-family home owned by a single individual, not a condo, not a duplex where the owner lives on the other side, then eighteen percent would be completely illegal. And the person, landlord keeps raising the rent and won't fix anything around the house, call the health department. Does Pomona have its own code enforcement as well? So call the code, call code enforcement and call the health department. So the health department deals with vectors for disease. So rats, rodents, bedbugs, even though they're not actually vectors for disease, but they're icky and so they've decided to take care of them. Mold and lead and lack of heat and things that cause disease. And your code enforcement department probably deals more with bricks and mortar issues like, and so there, and there's crossover, right? Like a heater is both brick and mortar and a vector for disease. If in doubt.
I, I just want to chime in here very quickly for the city of Pomona. I believe that our code enforcement department is only allowed to regu- regulate instances that they could visibly see from outside of the property. So for example, earlier this year, we had pipes burst in an apartment. A landlord would not take care of the issue. But because our code enforcement could visibly see water going out into the street from the first floor apartment, the city was able to issue and ask for correction. So please call health department and code enforcement. But be aware that the city of Pomona code enforcement does have limits on what it could correct. And it has to be visible from the sidewalk or street. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So we have other question and then we want to respect people's time because this is only going to go till eight PM and then we got to jump on to their Spanish one. There are a few more questions and let me see. Does, so does a tenant need to submit proof that they cannot pay rent because of a COVID-related reason, loss of employment or wages due to COVID? Go ahead, Jumana.
Sure. So no, they do not need to submit proof. But they should hang on to any proof that they have, just in case it goes to court.
Thank you, Jumana. So we have another question. What are my rights as a tenant if I am letting more people stay with me as a result of the pandemic? For example, there are more people in my unit. Can I get evicted or my rent raised because of that during COVID?
Jumana, you want this one? This was part of, or you want me to take it? So under the county ordinance, you cannot be evicted for having additional or unauthorized occupants in your unit during the period of the emergency. What we're hoping is that folks will be given a chance to correct the issue once the emergency is lifted. Like enough warning for folks to be able to relocate. But during the emergency, you cannot be evicted for either unauthorized occupants or unauthorized pets.
Okay, thank you, Elena. And so that concludes the questions that our residents submitted to us via email and via, via our, our chat opened right now. We also, I want to go ahead and turn it over to Vice Mayor Nora Garcia because with all of this comes a very important aspect, which is our census. That's how our city gets money funneled in through federal dollars and state dollars. So it is very important for you guys to do your senses. We can't stress enough how important it is for us to have funding. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Vice Mayor Nora Garcia.
Thank you, Yesenia. And thank you everyone on our panel for such a wonderful job. We truly appreciate your knowledge, insight, and your empathy for tenants and landlords in our city. But I wanted to speak briefly about the census. Every ten years, according to the Constitution of the United States, everyone living in this country, regardless of immigration status, is required to answer the United States census. The United States census grants cities like Pomona hundreds of millions of dollars in funding over a period of ten years. Between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty, the city of Pomona lost over six hundred and seventy million dollars in federal funding because of an undercount. Please fill out your census. You alone in ten years can bring almost seven thousand dollars to our communities for hospitals, schools, roads, mental health services, and of course, rent relief. There are programs that are dependent on the number of people living in a community to indicate exactly what services are needed in that community. Do your best to fill out that census, either by phone, email, or the paper form you received a few months ago. And with that, I would like to actually also ask you one other thing. Right now, the city of Pomona understands the difficulties that we are all under, undergoing. And so as we are asking community members, nonprofit organizations, the staff of the city of Pomona are working together to get help to people who need it as we all struggle to get through COVID nineteen. We are all pleased to learn that the moratorium on evictions was extended from July thirty-first to September thirtieth. But this only means that the problem has been delayed. Fortunately, funds are available to keep, help keep Pomona residents in their homes. Private funds, which were mentioned, private funds raised through the Pomona Compassion Fund, as well as federal dollars that have been allocated through the city of Pomona and was mentioned earlier, can help hundreds of families avoid evictions. Residents will not be asked for their immigration status on any of these application processes. We need your help to keep people in their homes. Please join the Pomona Champions Initiative and help us in any of the three critical following areas. Resident outreach. The city is partnering with several nonprofits.
You're on mute.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Resident outreach. Am I, did I stop at the right place?
You're good, you're good, yes.
Okay. The city is partnering with several nonprofits to help residents fill out the application. Pomona Champions can help by connecting residents in need with nonprofits that can help make sure they get it. Landlord education. By helping tenants access support, property owners can help keep families in their houses and access revenue to help them offset their costs. Fundraising. The more funds we can raise before September thirtieth for the Pomona Compassion Fund. Fundraising. The more funds we can raise before September thirtieth for the Pomona Compassion Fund, as well as other private entities, the more families we can help avoid eviction. We welcome you to join us, helping in any or all of these three areas mentioned. Please RSVP for a virtual webinar where you can register to be a Pomona Champion and learn more about the urgent need to support our most valuable residents. You can reach out by August twenty seventh to Natalie Chaitis, chaitis@fairplex.com. That is C-H-A-I-D-E-Z at F-A-R-F-A-I-R-P-L-E-X dot com. Thank you so much again to everyone in the panel, everyone in our community. If you have any questions, please reach out to us at pomonabasicneedscommittee@gmail dot com. And we will try our best to answer your questions. And I'm sure Yesenia will have no objection to also putting it out there that push and the city of Pomona can also help us, help you with any issues you may have regarding your tenants or your landlords and your rights. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being part of this program and have a good night.